All right, good evening. This is the November 2nd, 2022, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We are back in the Oyster River Middle School recital hall after being at Mastway last week. Our first item is approval of the agenda. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion from Denise. We have a second from Brian. Any discussion or changes? All those in favor of the agenda? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor of the agenda is approved. And do we have anybody for public comment this evening? We have one.
Good evening. I am Lauren Selig and I live here in Durham and I am one of the many candidates running for office in the election on Tuesday. And I just want to remind everyone in all three towns how crucially important it is to vote. There's no school. It's a teacher workshop day, as I'm sure most of you already know, or I hope you know. But voting in Durham is from 7:00 to 7:00 at Oyster River High School. In Lee, it is at Mastway. I believe the times are the same. And Madbury is at the Madbury Town Hall. And I think they're like 11:00 to 8:00. Is that right, Michael? Or 11:00 to 7:00? Do you know? Okay. Something like 11:00 to 7:00 or 11:00 to 8:00. But I just want to remind you, it's crucial that everybody votes. We have had elections in New Hampshire decided by as few as one vote. So please make sure you get out to vote. Bring your neighbors, invite your friends, give everybody you know a call, and look forward to seeing everyone at the polls on Tuesday. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment tonight? All right. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from October 19th. Denise?
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 19th.
A motion from Denise. Second from Brian. Any changes or additions? None? All right. All those in favor of approval of the minutes for October 19th? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor of this. Rep minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
You have to push the button and make the light come on. With the sign that says, "Push right button to talk." Thanks. Good evening. David Goldsmith, Moheramit. October was a very busy month for us at Moheramit, so I wanted to give you some updates about two big things that happened for us in October. We had our first all-school open house. Moheramit hadn't done that in the past, and especially coming out of so many years of being isolated and doing things on teams. It was really pretty fantastic to have the whole school in the building. We had half the school. We split up families by last name of students so that we can't fit everybody in our parking lot in the building all at once. I mean, this way families could stay together regardless of grade. So we had half of the school come for a half an hour. They went to classrooms. Students were in charge of bringing their adults around and touring the important places to them in their school. And they did that. And then they left and the second half came in. It was a great evening for everybody, I think. And I've heard a lot of great comments about that. So that happened in October. And then, of course, it was also pumpkin month for us. Our students harvested pumpkins. A big thanks, of course, to Jim Davis and Jessica Whalen, our PE teacher, who manages the vast majority of all of the pumpkin planting and harvesting with our students. It's a real full circle experience. Our students plant the pumpkins in June during school, and then Mr. Davis and I maintain it over the summertime. And then in the fall, they do all of the work, the students do, and they harvested all of the pumpkins. And then we carved them in school. We had over 50 family volunteers helping us, which was, again, a really awesome return to tradition. We carved in school. The students brought them out to the stroll paths. And our PTO did an amazing job of setting up and organizing the whole pumpkin stroll event for the evening as well. So it was a great time, a great return to community and to experiential learning at Moheramit. Those all happened in October. Thank you, of course, to everybody who took part and helped out. And then, of course, we have conferences next Tuesday after you vote, like Ms. Selig said. If you're at Moheramit, you'll have parent-teacher conferences. Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
What fraction of the pumpkins came out of the Moheramit pumpkin patch this year?
Yep. That's a great question. So we have, we needed 297 pumpkins and 220 came from our patch, which was pretty awesome.
Yeah, excellent.
Yeah. It was great. And it was a weird growing season. It looked in the middle of August. I was tromping around in that field and we had hardly anything and we didn't think we were going to be growing much. And then all of a sudden, end of August, September, the rains came and it was a pumpkin explosion. So it was very cool. Do I have to push the button?
No.
Thanks.
Hi, nice to see you. Ms. DeLoe from Mastway. We also had open house. We did have ours over two different nights. We split it up by grade levels. Tremendous outcome. I think our parents are just so thrilled to get back in the building. We're seeing that in lots of ways. We have a lot of volunteers that are coming on a regular basis and supporting classroom teachers and students in the classrooms. And most of my teachers were so excited. They had close to 100% of their classroom and their families showing up for open house. It was just a really great event. Folloween is a big PTO event that is celebrated in Lee. And I believe there were 300 to 400 people that showed up, thousands of dollars. The community supported our local parent-teacher organization. Fabulous turnout again. So we're just really seeing the community back into the building, which is wonderful. I had one classroom teacher who showed up for Pumpkin Day recently in kindergarten and said it's her first time in the building since her third grader had Pumpkin Day in kindergarten. So she just loved being back in the building and being a part of that, which is great. I, too, had some important dates to share. Again, I know we've all said, "No school next Tuesday." It's a big day. It's voting day and voting will be happening at Mastway School. It's also parent conferences. So I just want to make sure parents out there realize it might be a hopping building as we will hopefully have a great turnout for the election, as well as parent-teacher conferences will be occurring on that day. No school Friday. We're getting into, I think, what some people refer to as no school November. I don't know where October went, but we're into November. So no school on Tuesday because of conferences. The 11th, no school with Veterans Day. Of course, our Thanksgiving vacation's coming up. Some other important dates coming up in December is Coating and Coco. That's a school district-wide event that's very special, and that's on December 7th. And then our PTO is very active and will be having more events in December. A family movie night coming up. And Clark's in downtown Durham will be hosting on December 7th a PTO event for Mastway School as well, where I believe 10% of customers who are there having dinner that night that will go to the PTO as well. So very active, very happy. It feels like back to normal, per se, so that's really great. Any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Rashad, principal of the middle school. I'll stay with the conference theme to start. Next Tuesday, we'll be doing parent conferences at the middle school. Of note, something new, we'll actually be printing out our progress reports and sending them home Monday afternoon. So that'll give parents an opportunity to look at the progress reports and ask specific questions when they meet with teachers on Tuesday. As well, we'll also be sending home the STAR reports, the family view of that. And again, I encourage parents to reach out and ask questions in regards to that. Couple weeks after we do this process, Assistant Superintendent Philippone and I will be meeting with a group of parents to collect feedback about things we can improve on or hopefully things that people appreciated in regards to the progress reporting for first quarter. I want to thank you, thanks to the Durham town officials. Grade five students participated in the Kid Governor Program. The town of Durham was wonderful in terms of our students actually registered a vote and participated in a mock vote down at Town Hall. So that was a lot of fun. And just last week, we started to use the field turf for recess and PE. It's been a blast for the kids. We also hosted our first athletic contest in field hockey. We played Portsmouth Soccer, boys and girls. We played our local rival Dover. So a lot of fun. Thank you.
Jay, before you leave.
Yeah.
Share with the board your plans for Veterans Day.
Absolutely. So our counseling team, thank you, Jim. Our counseling team is preparing a, I would say, an assembly to recognize local veterans as well as local leaders. And they've actually extended invitations to you as a school board, hopefully receive that, as well as other local officials in the town of Durham, Lee, and Madbury. We just want to recognize and show appreciation for people who dedicate service in their local communities as well as our local veterans. Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Nowey from the high school. First, I just was informed Paige's going to handle a lot of our sports for this week, but our co-ed spirit team with Portsmouth is actually going to their first state finals this Sunday, and that begins at 12:30. And they are the third team to perform. And so I know we didn't have that information earlier in the week. For cross-country, our boys made it to the meet of champions. That is going to be on Saturday. And our girls placed second in the states and also made it to the meet of champions. So both teams will be racing this Saturday at Alvern. Our Barrington information night is on November 9th this coming week. Our Barrington eighth-grade tours that kids can sign up for is November 17th. And just a reminder that there's no school on the 8th or the 11th next week. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blandset, Diversity Equity Inclusion and Justice Coordinator. I just have a few updates. So exciting news. We've secured Tona Brown officially coming to visit, and we have the dates down. So she's going to be with us from Wednesday, March 22nd, to Sunday, March 26th. Tona will be meeting with student groups and teachers, rehearsing with students, doing a master class with select students, and then also doing an evening performance. And it's an exciting partnership that we also have with UNH, where she'll also be spending a day with them, doing a master class and an evening performance. So that will probably have some community components as well, so that's exciting. We held our second Superintendent DIJ Committee Group meeting last Tuesday. The agenda and notes can be found on the district website. We just discussed action items for the year. Our upcoming meeting will be held Tuesday, November 29th, at 6:30 PM in the high school library. And then we'll have a last meeting of the semester mid-December. And that will be an optional learning opportunity for members of the group. So that's exciting. Our teachers' DIJ needs assessment, we distributed that, and we have finished collecting the responses. We had 149 responses, so a sizable amount of data. And so I'm working with New Hampshire Listens, and we'll be reviewing the data to highlight any key themes that may better inform the professional development plan that will be implemented in January. And then lastly, we'll be presenting at the New Hampshire School Administrators Association Equity Conference on November 14th in Concord. Two teachers will be joining us in that presentation along with Paige. And the topic is going to be around building capacity for DIJ work. And we hope to share our district journey within this work to hopefully motivate other New Hampshire leadership in school districts to think of ways that they can personally move this work forward as well. Any other, or any questions?
Thank you. Are you moving on to the Assistant Superintendent?
I am not moving on to the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay.
I am making an announcement from the district as a member of the district. I just wanted to acknowledge Rebecca Nowey and her amazing completion of an Ironman in Utah. It was a 70.3. And just to give you a feel for what that is, that's a 1.2-mile swim, a 56-mile bike ride, and a 13.1-mile run. So she completed that on October 28th, and I just want to congratulate her.
Others from the district? And from the board? Denise?
Rachel talked about our DEIJ committee meeting, and I just want to thank the students who are on that committee, including Paige here. They just add so much to the committee, to the discussion. And I just think it's definitely, you know, I know that it's not always practical to include students on committees, but I just feel that they really do add a lot, a different perspective. And so anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to those students who are on the committee.
Suzanne, is the community dinner still happening?
No, not in the members.
Okay. Never mind. I don't have anything to announce then.
Just to clarify. Just to clarify, the voting in the town of Madbury is at the Town Hall from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to district reports from the Assistant Superintendent. None. And so, Jim?
Thank you, Michael. It's a real pleasure this evening to introduce a new member of Oyster River. This evening, I'd like to invite Jen Brown to the podium. So Jen has been on the job for a week and a half. And at the end of the very first week, she outlined all the different issues that she was already dealing with. And today, we had a pretty awesome administrative meeting where we just began very simply with, let's tell Jen something that we're proud of or excited of that's happening in our schools. And she ended up with a lot more work to do. So I want to welcome Jen. Her background is impeccable. It's in public relations and marketing. And I'm really excited about the fact that she's on the team. And Jen, would you like to say a few words?
Hello. My name is Genevieve Brown, Jen for short. I'm the new district communications specialist. I started on October 24th. I'm very excited for the opportunity to introduce myself tonight. Thank you. As Dr. Morris mentioned, I've been very busy, and my primary focus has been the new website. So I'm doing a deep dive in the coming weeks, and I've already started last week. All the previous recommendations from Amy Sterndale, all the documentation. I am meeting with internal stakeholders, digital learning specialists, the IT team to discuss migration, transition, and data preservation. I've also worked on a couple of press releases, which I will keep secret for right now, but I'll give you an update next time. Also, some internal outreach, getting to know my colleagues, leadership, principals, and the whole ORCSD team. Also working on the coming district newsletter, as well with, working with Suzanne and Dr. Morris. Are there any questions for me?
I'll just say, I'm really glad that you're on board. Welcome to the district.
And then just one other announcement, Michael. I just want to remind the board that we have a workshop on Monday with the Barrington School Board. And Michael had reached out as to whether you would all be receiving a packet, like we traditionally do in a normal board meeting. And you will be, so be looking for a packet Thursday or Friday. That same packet is being sent over to the superintendent in Barrington so she can share it with the school board. I think you're going to be impressed with the collection of data that we've put forward from various divisions within the high school that single out the Barrington students in terms of their performance and participation in Oyster River High School. So I'm looking forward to putting that out there for you and for the Barrington board.
Jim, I know that the Barrington School Board had specifically requested that Principal Nowey participate in that meeting. Obviously, the focus is high school, so that makes sense. Are there other administrators that'll be participating as well?
Yes. So one of the more exciting things that happened this school year, just by coincidence, not by design, is our new school counselor-director, Shannon Karen, actually is a resident of Barrington. And so I think that she adds the perspective of parent and now school leader at the high school. And I think that is, that adds another bridge to the work that we're doing between the three communities of our district and Barrington.
Is this meeting on Monday their regularly, a regular board meeting for them, or it's just a workshop for, with us?
They typically meet, I would guess it's a special meeting, Brian, because they usually meet the Monday before our Wednesday.
Okay.
So I think it's a workshop for them as well.
All right. That brings us to the business administrator then.
Good evening. So this evening, I have the 2223 budget update, standard format I usually present. I will say that it is ahead of schedule from prior years, but the last few years have been unusual, so. Any questions?
Questions for Sue?
No? Okay. I'll be back in a couple months.
All right. Thank you. Next up, the student representative.
Yeah, so some sports announcements. Tomorrow, girls volleyball is going to be at Pinkerton. Boys soccer is going to be at Exeter. And Unified Soccer is going to be at Keene. So congrats to all of them for making it very far in the playoffs. We had class meetings last week. It was mostly talking about bullying prevention and things in that area. And Rachel Blandset was also able to introduce herself to everyone. And then Ms. Nowey talked to seniors specifically about the graduation date. So that's all what happened in those class meetings. Coffee House is tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00. It's going to be $5 at the door. The winter sports night is going to be on the 10th at 6:30. So all parents and students planning to play a winter sport should attend that. And then the fall play, which is going to be Clue, is going to be on the 17th, the 18th, and the 19th. So people can purchase tickets now.
Great. Thank you, Paige.
Hey, Paige, do you know where to purchase the tickets at for the play?
I can do that for you, Paige. It was in the email I sent you about announcing the play. There's a connection inside that email where you can buy it online.
I know for me. I meant for everyone.
Everybody can, yeah, okay, got it.
Not everyone has a personalized email from the district.
Sorry. Sorry, Heather.
I can say that all students received that same email, if that helps answer your question.
We can send it out through school messenger as well, Heather.
Can, I assume tickets can also be purchased at the door?
I would assume so, too, but I'm not positive on that.
All right. I don't think there's a finance committee report tonight.
We met before the workshop, and basically what we discussed in the workshop is what was discussed at the meeting, so there's really nothing to add.
All right. Next up is unanimous consent agenda. Is there any of these items that anybody would like to discuss separately? All right. Hearing none, I will move for approval of unanimous consent agenda, which includes approval of the Mastway, Moheramit, and Transportation Office plowing bid, and approval of the list of policies for second read, which includes JLDBB, suicide prevention and response, and EBBD, indoor air and water quality. A second for Brian. All those in favor of the unanimous consent agenda? Seven in favor and the student rep in favor. That is approved. All right. So now we are at discussion items. The first item here is a special education overview, and we've invited Catherine for that purpose. This, kind of like some of the other overviews we've done of other areas over the last couple months. This is, I think, going to be a fairly general look at the special education landscape. And then if there are follow-up topics or themes that we need to dig into more at a later meeting, we can, we can do that.
Catherine, are you doing the PowerPoint? Alex or Caleb, could one of you come in, please?
Well, while we're getting that set up, just a clarification as we look down towards the end of the agenda. The consultation with legal counsel, we don't actually have legal counsel present or participating.
Right.
So that will actually be a non-public session, not a non-meeting. Let me get there.
Sorry, you said to wait till they got back there. I think we're safe, though. So thanks for the opportunity to share a little bit about special education with you tonight. So I've kind of, as you can see through the PowerPoint, broken up into different sections. Some of it is just an overview of special education and statistics in our school district, but then also answering some of the questions that came from some board members in thinking about this presentation. You are also provided with two other handouts. One was about the special education process for early childhood, and one was for school age. And those two charts are provided by Parent Information Center. They do a really good job creating tools and resources for school districts and families. And so those specific resources are resources that I share with others. When parents are learning about the process, there is in the procedural safeguards, which is essentially parent rights, there is a breakdown, but this one is much more specific and a nice snapshot for families. So I also provided that for you all to give you just a bigger picture of the process in general. So starting with, obviously, a referral to special education. So when we receive a referral to special education, again, anyone can refer. We are required to meet within 15 business days after receiving the referral. And the purpose of that meeting is to sit down, discuss the concerns regarding the referral and what we're going to do. Are we going to move forward with our evaluation? Or are we going to say, "These needs can be met through regular education, we're not going to evaluate"? So that's the first step in the process. Typically, you know, that meeting can really drive decisions that we make moving through the process. Parents do come to that meeting, so it is an official IEP team meeting. It's not decisions that we make without the parent. For preschool, of course, early supports and services transition drives a lot of this process, but you do not have to be in early supports and services to make a referral. We do receive referrals from physicians. We receive referrals from parents. So it does not have to come from early supports and services. But it is But it is built into early supports and services. If your child is receiving services through there, our area agency is community partner, so generally that's the agency that's coordinating a lot of the services. But there is a timeline that's built in, so that we're meeting early enough to know who the student is, when they're coming in, when they turn three. And why that's critical to the conversation is that if a student who was turning three is ultimately eligible for special education, they have to have an IEP in place by their third birthday. And this is an indicator that the New Hampshire Department of Education looks at every year. It's data they need to turn over to OSEP, which is the Office of Special Education in DC. So after the referral meeting, we do have an evaluation, and we've done testing. We move into the evaluation review and eligibility determination. That happens within 60 days. So as soon as received consent for evaluation, we have 60 days for an initial evaluation to conduct the assessments and to have the meeting. And parents are to receive any reports from those evaluations five days in advance. Parents can waive this if we need a couple extra days, if a student was sick for an amount of time during the 60 days, just to give the evaluator a little bit more time to have a report. But generally, everything is completed by the end of 60 days, and we have a determination meeting. So the determination is, does a student have a disability? And does a student, because of that disability, require specialized instruction or related services? Related services are things such as counseling, speech and language, OT, PT, those kinds of things. If we determine that the student has a disability but does not require specialized instruction, so we do have students who have a learning disability, for example, but they don't require any special education, but we do think, hmm, they need some accommodations. Accommodations in the classroom are important. That triggers the 504 process. So sometimes that happens because of this. After we have the eligibility meeting and we determine the student is eligible, again, we need parental consent. Then within 30 days, we have an IEP developed to review for the parent. So throughout this process, there's several rights that parents have. Certainly, they have 14 days after we make a decision to think about any decision. It does extend the process a bit, but they do have that, so they can read documents, understand what they need, reach out to me for, you know, if they have any more questions, and then the process keeps going. New Hampshire is a consent state. That's not an, that's above and beyond the IDEA. So next door are neighbors in Maine. You can start the process, start an IEP and get going without consent. But we are a consent state, so if we have parents who do not respond, we have some options related to that. Sometimes they just forget. Sometimes they lose track, so we remind them, we need your response. Sometimes they don't know how to disagree, so they want some more time to just understand that process. And then sometimes they, for whatever reason, don't respond. We have a couple options in the process. If it's not an initial IEP or an initial evaluation, we can do implied consent. But it, it takes a little bit more of a process and a certified letter to do that. So then after that, an IEP is in place. We've, we've discussed placement. Placement is where you receive your services. It's your least restrictive environment. So that means, in order to implement this IEP, what is going to be the best place to receive my services so I can make progress towards my goals and be in the environment that's best for my learning? After that, it's annual review every year. Any questions about that first part? Yes?
Just for the laypeople out there, or me to some extent, if you had to explain to someone the difference between an IEP and a 504, how would you explain that? How would you describe the differences between the two?
Yeah, the biggest difference between an IEP and 504 is that specialized instruction. So if a student has a disability, they may qualify for a 504, they may qualify for an IEP. But if you require specialized instruction, so that's instruction in reading, writing, math, social skills, that is not a 504, because you're requiring instruction in order to make progress. A 504 is usually just supplementary aids and services, is what it's called, and accommodations. So you can get speech through a 504, as long as it's, it's not filling a gap or a requirement for the student to make progress. So those, that's the biggest difference.
What if someone needs medical accommodations? What does that fall?
Medical accommodations, so it depends. So we have students who have IEPs who require medical accommodations, and we have students who have 504s. The best example of that might be a student who has diabetes, for example. They may require 504, so they have access to the nurse, they have extra time if needed, but then they might have an IEP because of the amount of, how the disability impacts their learning, and they may require specialized instruction. So it's really dependent on each student and what that looks like.
What would be the, the role or the place of external evaluations? One question I've heard is if the, the school, sort of in the IEP meeting, the district and parents disagree on the extent or type of, of services that would benefit the student, I've heard parents say, well, should I go out and get an external evaluation done? How does that play into the, the process and the decision?
So in terms of services, an evaluation doesn't really give us more information necessarily about what the services are. Generally, parents will seek independent educational evaluation, should they feel they disagree with the evaluation that's been conducted. Parents have the right to conduct their own evaluation, but the school district also has their right to conduct theirs. And the reason why, whenever we hear about a parent doing this, we do try and jump on it and talk about it, because we may come to a common agreement that evaluation is needed, and if it's needed, then let's talk about the resources that are needed to do that. Sometimes it may be external. We may be, agree that, given a nature of a disability or questions that we have, but nine times out of 10, our school psychologists can do almost any evaluation, and we can seek healthcare evaluations from providers if needed. So we do have our own toolkit. Independent educational evaluations are very costly for families, and insurance does not cover all of those evaluations. So when they enter down that road, and then they find out the school district does not have to pay for it, that's really kind of a blow to them finding out after the fact. So we publish the policy, the school board policy regarding evaluations. Every time parents receive their parent rights, we publish it in student handbooks and on the website. But there is a place for an outside evaluation. It's just not common practice to do so. The other reason for that is, sometimes when you get an outside evaluation, they get a very narrow view of a student. They really, they can look at a record, but it's the conversation that comes with that record to really understand what this means. And so I think that, you know, again, there's a right place for it, but it's not for every student. So here's sort of our big, big picture caseload history, and I just, you know, put a lot of numbers up there for you guys. The biggest reason I went back so far was to show you that, you know, right around 2016, 17, we're at the same, we're around the same vicinity with 337 students in Oyster River who identified, and we're at 339. You see that leap from last year to this year. And so I dug into my data a bit, and we have been that high before. You know, Dr. Morse and I were talking a little bit about the whys behind that jump. Some of it is move-ins, for sure. We did, we have gathered another large group of move-ins. Some of it could be a result of services that are required because of the COVID pandemic, and some of it is, is not. We have a really strong MCSS process in place, and so we're able to really work with kids for a good chunk of time to determine, is this really a disability, or is it supplemental and, and they're making progress? So we have, those students were getting services during that time, even though they eventually did end up identified. So there's a little leap there. Our Barrington numbers are a little bigger than they were, obviously, that many years ago. But that's sort of the caseload history. Yeah.
Do these numbers include the kids we have after 18?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Is that a large amount, or is that?
It depends on, right now, there's, yes, there's, there's definitely at least a handful right now who are above grade 12. Yeah, so typically, students, you can stay in high school until you achieve a high school diploma. If you do not, then you're now eligible until age 22. That law changed this summer in July. It used to be age 21. Any questions about the numbers? Yes, Denise?
It does seem like there's a leap between elementary and middle, and that's, you know, seems pretty consistent, that there seems to be a big leap there. And I'm not sure if you have any thoughts about?
There is a big, there is a big leap. So some of it is, I have to say, like, for several years, students would have these great supports and services in place. They went to the middle school, and we didn't have the tutors there to carry on and, and keep the programming going for a student. So therefore, if the student isn't making progress and you evaluate them, you might find a learning disability or something else that was masked. But now we have, with your support, we have tutors in place, so I expect that to even out. I, I think in any piece of data, you see a leap in middle school. There's a big difference in environments, when you go from having one teacher to several teachers, and that can really impact a student and their progress. So we, we closely monitor that. When I review the students who are identified each year, I don't see anything in there that alarms me in terms of, are we giving too much to students, or, or are we getting not enough? I, I look at those cases, and I see that they've had a lot of intervention, and it was really time to sit down and look at what more could be done. Yeah, but that environment change is really, it's, it's kind of shocking, you know, in terms of the environment for kids.
Do we have a sense of the students from Barrington and how those who have been identified in middle school or sense that they would benefit from additional services choose Oyster River versus Co-Brown or Dover?
I think it would be, like, my opinion, I don't think it's anything, I, I do think that there are families who choose, choose Oyster River because of the service provision model. I think they look at our caseloads, I think they look at our class sizes. That all matters. It's not just what they might get for special education. It's also, in a classroom of 18 versus 28, what's that look like for, you know, my student with a specific learning disability? I think in terms of Co-Brown, unless you're fairly independent and require a little support, that's, kids don't do as well there if you need a lot of support. So sometimes they'll try it out and see how it goes, and if it doesn't work well, they often come to us. Dover does have some creative programming for high school students. Dover also offers, I don't want to say tracking, but ultimately, they offer more class choice in terms of different level systems. We, we don't do that at Oyster River. We really believe in heterogeneous grouping. We put kids in a classroom, and then we provide the services that are needed so they can access that class. And our data and results is amazing, because, again, last year, 100% of our students with disabilities graduated. So that's why, when we look at our high school caseloads, we have to, we have to really monitor those, and when we look at their study skills classes, because they're doing a lot to accommodate and make sure those students are getting the preview and review they need to achieve the same results as their peers.
And looking at these numbers, I think that the percentage of tuition students with IEPs is a little bit lower than the percentage of resident students with IEPs at the high school.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, we don't have, right, because we have 19 of them. You know, Dover, I don't know what their numbers are at versus Co-Brown, but Barrington's overall district percentage is higher than ours in identification rate.
I think it's also important to point out, Catherine, that if the child coming in from Barrington has unique needs that we can't provide for, they pay an additional amount of money to have that service provided.
Yes. And it's not uncommon for us to, you know, if a student tried Dover, to then come to us the next year, or sometimes mid-year, if we can accommodate that, and vice versa. If there was a, a student who really wanted to access more of the Dover programming, then they work that out with Barrington, so. This is our percentage rates of identified students. Again, just sort of a historical view, looking at where we're at. You can see that jump from last year to this year. In, in the, in our growth rates, though, every year, the amount of move-ins is definitely more than we anticipate, for sure. And, you know, I'm constantly fielding phone calls and emails from families moving this way to understand how their child's IEP will be implemented once they read, once they get here. So, and I ask parents, like, how did you hear about Oyster River? You're coming from Alabama, you're coming from Tennessee, you're coming from Washington State. They look at the state data. They look at the information on the school. It's beyond looking at great schools, so they'll go in and look at, okay, the seacoast of New Hampshire, or Southern Maine, and they start looking at how students perform on the different assessments, including students with disabilities.
Another question, Catherine. Sorry. Oh, for the change from 2015 to 2022, which was fabulous, is, are there trends in the categories of disability? You know, an increase in other health impairment, or autism, or depression?
Not in, not that's any different from typical trends. So the high incidence disabilities, or specific learning disability and other health impairment, that's typical of, of most districts. In terms of autism, our rate seems pretty consistent with that. When you look at a student that might have major depression or significant emotional difficulties, or qualified under emotional disturbance, most times, and that category, I know nationally is growing, so we'll probably see that uptick a bit. It is a really hard conversation with families, because the label emotional disturbance sounds, it, it's a tough, it's a tough sell. So when we work with that with parents, we really, we really need them to understand that it's not what it used to be 20 years ago. They're really focusing on anxiety and depression, and for people to have a solid understanding of what an emotional disturbance means. It would be great if New Hampshire changed the word disturbance, because that is really old, but they haven't. Some students with low-level anxiety or attention deficit disorder typically qualify under other health impairment. Staffing, just, you could see our current, where we're at with staffing and projected, there's nothing really different there. It's all the same, and it's been pretty much the same in terms of professional staff. That doesn't include what I've talked about on my yellow sheet, so changing that tutor to a teacher is not in there yet, because it hasn't been signed, sealed, and delivered. So you'll see, basically, what's in the budget now. When you see includes one Barrington, what that means is, at that time, we have one paraeducator designated for Barrington, and like Dr. Morse said, if they require services above and beyond the regular tuition, Barrington does pay us for those services. So they pay us for paraeducators, and they pay the actual cost of the paraeducator, and then any services above and beyond speech, OT, PT, behavioral support services. These are just, again, a snapshot of caseloads, so you can see our elementary schools. Moheramit, as you saw in the big numbers, I mean, they're, they have trended down in the past, you know, three years. They generally used to start the year at 50, 60, so they're trending down, which is pretty consistent with their enrollment changes. And this is what happened to Massway, when Massway started going down in enrollment. What's unique about Massway is we do have that specialized program at Massway, so some Moheramit students do go to Massway.
Catherine, if I could just back you up on that particular point. So as we're seeing the numbers go down at the elementary school, as Denise noted, we see the numbers going up to the middle school, the staffing follows, the students. So we're not hiring new people to accommodate the same number of kids. We're using our staff wisely and, and moving them along with the kids who have the needs.
So students who would normally attend Moheramit based on where they live, who are attending Massway, do they show up? Which, which column?
In Massway.
They show up, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll see, yeah, more students at Mass, Massway. I think there's two or three right now that would be at Moheramit. And then middle school and high school, so just how those break down by grade level. You can see, coming into the middle school, we're at 19, that fifth grade. We'll see what that looks like going into sixth grade. We'll see what that looks like going into sixth grade. And then 34, 35, 38, it's a big eighth grade group. And I, that's why I spent a lot of time looking at those students and their IP is to figure out why that number's at 38, but it's a real number. And then high school. And those include, you know, all the students at each grade level, including the Barrington students. So nine through 12, we put the students in. So you can see in grade 12, where Brian brought up earlier, includes 12 plus, there's 47 students. That number's partially bigger because of 12 plus. Funding sources, I know this was one of the questions. So we talked a little bit about this in the workshop. So we have our local budget, of course, that is supported by you all as the board and the community. We have Medicaid reimbursement. We receive a fraction of the cost for services that we can submit. So for Medicaid reimbursement, the student must be eligible to receive Medicaid. And then we bill medically billable services. And a few years ago, the regulations changed around, it's been more than a few years, it was right before COVID, changed around what could be billed and how it's billed. They changed how we can bill for transportation. So they've drastically reduced our ability to bill in some areas. And, and so that's been starting to level out for us to see what's actuals at this point. We had a year of a lot of, a higher rate of reimbursement that was kind of finishing up a regulation. And then we transitioned, transitioned into the new regulation. People do not know who's eligible for Medicaid when they're billing. It's a very private process. So we have a company that we work with that it's all managed through them. We do the proper consents that are required. We enter everything into a system. And then on the backend, they know which students can then be billed for Medicaid reimbursement to the state of New Hampshire. Special education aid. So all students who are placed at a district are submitted in our district. We currently don't have any students who hit cap in, in district and mainly because the cap has become so high in terms of the cost. To get above that threshold, we're not able to bill. Every year, we take a handful of students who have probably the most services in the district. And we have a calculation and we work them up and they're not hitting that, that cap. So only students who are at a district at this point. And that's, it is a lot of work. It's, it's invoicing and things have to match and they're very picky. But once we exceed three and a half times the estimated state average expenditure per pupil, that's when we'll get some reimbursement. It's the year after it's been submitted. So we finish submitting in, you know, June of 2022. They'll review things in July. And at some point this year, Sue will see the revenue that we, we get from that. And she uses that in her projections. Preschool tuition, which is, you know, for non-identified students. And we talked about this too. It's very nominal at this, at this moment. We won't refuse students who need an early childhood experience, but it is not as much as we used to be able to collect. And then federal grant funding. Each year, we have IDEA, IDEA preschool funds. And those are targeted towards staffing. We have a little bit in those that can go towards some professional development with staff. It's very nominal, but most of it is going to staffing. So I work closely with him and we figure out, once we get our funding, how much that is and then which staff members go on the grant.
I would add that the federal money is, from its inception in 1975, it was supposed to be 40 cents on the dollar. And I think the highest it's ever been is 12. So that cost, of course, is borne by the local taxpayer.
Yeah.
When you talk about in special education aid in the middle there, exceeding three and a half times or 10 times the estimated state average. Average of what, average of all, cost for all students? Average for special ed students?
State average, it's a per pupil cost. So whatever goes into that, that funding formula where it's a per pupil cost, which doesn't typically include special education. It includes all your, your operating costs, but not special education.
Okay.
Yeah. It's not a big number. But when you do three and a half times that number, it's a big number. Yeah, I think it's generally around about 62,000 or 64,000, but probably up to 64,000 at this point. So we have to get above $64,000. And then you don't get 100% when it's at three and a half times. It's, when it's above three and a half times, you get a portion of that. So they might say, we'll give you 70%. And at time of reimbursement, they might say, we're going to give you 80% of that 70%. Yeah. Yeah, reading those memos is really fun to try and figure out what are we really going to get.
That's not the only funding source that that happens with either in education, just so you know.
Yeah.
Plenty of other, you know, you may get this, but you'll get that, so.
I was talking with the Utah Department of Education this year and they work with several states out west. And the state departments of education handle any of that high-level tuition cost. So instead of districts submitting, they pay the bill. It doesn't come to the district. It's just different models. But we have to submit and prove it and then we'll get a certain reimbursement.
What types of support do we provide for the older students now up to age 22?
So depending on, you know, what their IEP says, that's what drives that discussion. We do look at heavily functional skills and transitional skills and work closely with Sandy Devens, who's our transition coordinator, to provide opportunities, volunteer-based, internship-based, work-based. We get students connected with vocational rehab, so they're starting that process. And we do contract with Easter Seals, which provides youth transition services to also look at what kind of other community experiences do students need? Because one of the things we know is we can't continue, we, we don't always love to keep kids in the school building all day if they're not accessing other classes. We do have students who love certain classes, so they might take that same class every year. They love the teacher, they love the class, they like the experience. But then we also look at what else is needed. We also have our own community outings that we plan. So the students will go, plan out what they might need to, to make something or create something, they need to budget for it, they need to shop for it. We were doing swimming before COVID. That hasn't started back up. We're, they go bowling every week, again, as a social opportunity and to practice some of the skills that they're learning that week. And then we also work with Northeast Passage to provide some of that recreational therapy as well. So I know there also was a question about contracted services and, and how that works in the district. So, you know, sort of the why behind it first is we have some services that fluctuate. So we do, for example, behavioral support services may fluctuate. We have one speech pathologist who's been contracted for a number of years and it was left like that so that if services fluctuate, we're looking at the contracted and not looking at a riff with our own staff, reduction in force. And then, you know, we, that way it's, we're contracting for what we need. It's attractive and then we can change for year to year. So our biggest agency that we work with, of course, is Strafford Learning Center. We're very strong partners with them. And so we talk every year about what's anticipated and what might be needed. And then they help to set that service up for us. This includes like teacher of the deaf services. So that's very IEP-based. It's a low-incidence identification category, it's low-incidence service. So that means it's, it's a hard person to find. But they're able, we've had a great relationship with Strafford Learning Center and we've been working closely with the same teacher of deaf for several years. So that way, we're able to adjust that contract. It can be more cost-effective. And just talked about it's difficult to find staff for low incidence. Teacher of the visually impaired, that's also an area that's very challenging to find. The agencies hire and train the staff. We carry on and invite them with, to our training as well. But they do provide the professional development and they provide them the support for that. And then what's also nice is having another perspective of professionals coming in that aren't just working in Oyster River. They're working in various school systems and they're part of a larger network. It kind of feels like a, when I think about like what bigger hospitals do in terms of like teaming situations, they can do similar things where they talk hypothetically, like a group of OTs and they're thinking about some new strategies. So they meet regularly and can talk about what, what are some great things they're doing with students so that they can bring that to our schools. So that's another advantage. So who, so in our district, it's all of our preschool education program staff. So our teachers, paraeducators, speech, language pathologists, occupational therapists, and child fine coordinator. Occupational therapy district-wide, physical therapy district-wide, speech and language pathologists, one at Massway, teacher of the deaf, social work services, North Star Services. So we contract with Strafford Learning Center for a social worker who helps our students who are taking the after-school classes. So BECA budgets for students to take evening classes. It's part of a consortium. So it gives students, you know, sometimes CTE students, for example, need more time in their day so they can take an evening class. But sometimes those students also need supports with those after-school services and, and classes. So we have that built in. And then we also are working on some creative alternative learning plans with her support as well. Easter Seals, we talked about, Northeast Passage, board-certified behavior analysts. Right now, we contract with Constellations Behavioral. I also am working with outreach from the Birchtree Center. And then an educational audiologist. So that's right now the amount of staff that we contract with.
What does, on the, on the BCBA line almost to the bottom, what does clinical instructor mean?
Clinical instructors, so in a couple of our programs, we have a BCBA who supervises the program for a student. And the clinical instructors are typically people who are sitting for their certification, but they're not there yet. It's somewhat like an RBT, which is a registered behavior technician, but it's, it's a little bit different. They're there all day versus a BCBA is not with us all day. They pop between the schools to support the programs. But they're there every day to do that ongoing job-invented professional development, supporting students, helping with some ABA services and things like that. Any questions about contracted services? Okay, so I wanted to pull a little data because I like data, you guys know that. And so the state every year provides determination data. And so I just pulled a snapshot of some of the data that they pull. Some of the data that they've pulled, we've never gotten answers to. There's been a lot of turnover in the department. So I had some questions about some of our data. So I didn't list that up here. For example, our participation data in the SAS, they put it at like 40-something percent in grade five or six. There's way more than that who participated. So nobody's fixed it, but it wasn't used against us. So we're into the next year. But this is some of the data that I know 100% is accurate. So in Oyster River, we had 100% students graduate. The state of New Hampshire average was 78.45%. Our dropout, of course, was zero. The state dropout rate is 9.54%. Again, this is students with disabilities. This is something that's also, I'm really proud of, is 80% or more of a day in regular education. So 80% or more of a child's day they're spent in their classroom. 82.84% and the state average is 73.75%. In separate schools and other at a district, we're at 1.49% and the state is at 2.46%. So that means we're keeping district, students in district. And then enrolled in a preschool, a regular preschool program, 100% versus the state of New Hampshire average is 41.51%. Yes.
That last one, I, it's like where, where, what type of preschool are they enrolled in then?
So districts are allowed to just have a special education preschool. Yes, and so we moved away from that probably five or six years ago, at least. We moved away from that. And so we, we have a goal of always it being 50/50. It's not always 50/50 in terms of percentages, but we work towards that. And we have, you know, we, we really value the regular preschool program for students. What we're finding is if you don't provide that environment, sometimes parents, parents refuse services because they want to stay in their regular childcare setting or daycare setting. So their student misses out on services until they come to kindergarten. And it would have been great to have them in speech for two years. Yeah. Anything else?
It's just really impressive, both at the top-level numbers and looking under the hood as you've, you've helped us do tonight.
Yeah. Yep, I'm pretty proud, I have to say. It's the hard work that the special education teachers that we have in this district are phenomenal. They work very hard. They work with their regular education colleagues. They come up with creative solutions and it really helps in terms of how students do and the progress they make in the district. That's why it's not good to have 45 students on a caseload. This is exactly why. You'll see those numbers on the other side if you do.
All right, thank you very much, Catherine.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item in our discussion and action items is the fiscal year '24 budget. So last Thursday, we had a budget workshop where we talked through the initially proposed budget from the administration based on the budget goals that the board had established about a month prior. And where we are now is, is starting to, we have, the board's had, you know, a few days to think about those initial inputs and ask some additional questions that Dr. Morse has, Dr. Morse and Sue have, have answered. You've got some of that hard copy in your blue folder. We're not looking to make decisions tonight, but to start to find our direction towards a budget plan for, for next year. We are expecting next week, or maybe even later this week, to receive our adequacy aid, so that the, the revenue side from the state, state portion of the budget. And that will be obviously a big, big input to what is the potential local tax burden that results from the proposed budget for next year. So we're looking for some open discussion here tonight with, with, with an eye towards where will we, where will we land when it comes to some of the proposed addition items for the budget or other things that we need to look at and, you know, adding or removing from the budget? Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Morse.
So the, the questions that you ask will always show up in your folders. And I'll always share the email I get from any one of you with all of you. It is really important that the foundational information is the same for all seven of you. For example, UC sent me an email today. It happened because we had done it in finance, that she needed the information on the per-student cost related to athletics. And so that was an easy one to, to push out today. But as you ask questions and we get answers, we put, we'll put them in the blue folder so you always have the same information to work from.
I know whether I'm mad or new to this, but we always, we kind of approach this, we always kind of put everything into three buckets. It's the, it's the must-haves, it's the could-live-without. And I could, I'm indifferent, you know, either way. So as we get through here, you know, you're probably going to want something that might not make it on there. I mean, it always happens, but maybe prioritize it and just see what, what you like, what you don't like, and what number we can agree upon. At some point, not today, because the revenues will have an effect on this. So that's why we don't usually get to that number until those revenues come in. Because if the revenues come in short, then obviously this conversation changes, so. But I mean, there's, I mean, this is the time for open conversation. So I mean, I'm not going to, I want to see what everyone else says before I jump in on a mic, so.
A clarifying question on the piece that Dr. Morse brought up about the per-student or per-player athletic costs. Was that, I know the finance committee had, had been curious about this before the full board started to look at it. Was the intent to, you know, to, to look at that in a way that might affect the '23-'24 budget? Or just good information for us to know now?
It was not directly tied to the '23-'24 budget. There were some questions about services, you know, wraparound additional costs related to athletics. And we wanted to try to understand what, what is the direct athletic cost. And then, so we started with looking at the total, total cost per sport essentially. And then the cost per player was kind of a natural next question from that. But no, it was not a- not a, not a direct input. Brian, Heather?
It's, it stemmed really from your transportation con- conversation. It's really how it all started. So we wanted to get an idea of, you know, equity and equality and, you know, what direction do we go in? Is this more of just getting our minds in a place to see like, all right, how do they compare? Um, and some have changed a lot, but some of them you'd think would cost more actually, you know, per student actually costs less. Some are quite expensive that aren't, but some of them have different funding mechanisms as well. I mean, you know, swimming is expensive, but we have ways of offsetting that, you know. Um, skiing's expensive, hockey's expensive, uh, but we have ways of offsetting that. So they're all different animals and it's kind of tough to, um, kind of see. We weren't looking to make any decisions. It was more of a, you know, where do they fall and how could we justify doing something? But then of, of course, with transportation, it's not really about money. It's about logistics and bodies. So.
Yeah. And I would add that this is, this is not an all-in, you know, look at the, the cost of the athletic programs. This is really focused on the high school. For one thing, there's not, you don't see middle school costs here, which are substantially lower anyway. But, um, and then there's also sort of some wraparound things that show up in other parts of the budget. So, so, you know, we don't, we don't pull out how much of, um, you know, landscaping, groundskeeping from the facilities budget is athletic versus other purposes. We don't pull that out, you know, like, like Brian was saying, the transportation part in the, in the, in the transportation budget. So it's not, it's not everything. But I, I think it's also worth pointing out that, um, you know, athletics is a big part of the high school experience, but it really is not a big part of the budget overall, in my opinion. We're talking about, um, you know, we're talking about maybe what, five percent of the total high school budget that goes into the athletic programs.
And, um, Jim did the, were the figures for per student for the, um, musicals and for major clubs also, um, do we have those yet or not at this point?
So they are going to be much harder to chase after because unlike athletics, uh, there's no specific data point in person responsible. So over the years, you'll have, you know, a musical that attracts, you know, over a hundred students and another year the musical might attract thirty students. Uh, so, uh, because we don't have a clubs coordinator like we do with athletics, it's much harder to chase down those numbers. It'll be extremely variable.
Oh, um, and one of the questions that I had is, um, in terms of the facilities and the list of items that, um, you know, we received a revised one at our budget workshop. And the original one, um, included, in particular, I was curious about the Massway cafeteria expansion.
Mm-hmm.
That was then taken out. And I'm just, you know, maybe would like to know a little bit more about why that was on the list and why it was taken off the list.
So the numbers came in after we started, um, putting together the budget book for you. The number for the Massway school, when we've, extension of the library cafeteria originally, mm, five years ago is around three hundred thousand. And the estimate that we got from, um, by one construction is now six hundred and fifty thousand. So there's, you know, a different discussion that needs to go on when it reaches that level.
And then I have another, another question. Um, and, um, I thank you for providing the list of the safety, um, features. And looking at it, and I see one of them is, um, doors that lock from the inside. But I also wonder, is it, in a way, in a, in a situation, could someone also get inside a classroom, lock the door, which is a little of what happened or they thought happened in Uvalde?
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, is it, it, it kind of makes me wonder, is it, you know, it's a gamble either way, I guess. But, you know, is it worth the investment knowing that that is also a possibility of something that someone could do that?
Sure. So, um, as I've stated in the past, Denise, we're very lucky to have Mike Nicolosi as our SRO. He's taken on a more district-wide responsibility just because he's interested in making sure our kids are, you know, safe. And the two police forces in Lee and Edbury have welcomed him into the school communities to do Alice training as an example. But one of the things that he has done with Jasmine Daniels, our facilities director, has walked all the buildings. And that's part of what you're seeing in that presentation. But we also were looking at, uh, whether doors could be locked in, in class, in the classrooms as well. So, um, you know, the draft budget considers a safety line depending on where, um, the board wants to be. I suspect that it'll be a multi-year effort as we start putting numbers next to things that, you know, are pretty costly. Um, so that's where we're at. We're at the beginning stages of articulating a capital improvement plan around safety, which includes locking doors from the inside.
Right. And I, and I think my question is, is it really safer to have doors that lock from the inside, given that you could also have a situation where someone could get into a classroom, lock the door and then, you know, prevent?
Sure. So, um, we work off of the Homeland Secure, Homeland Security recommendations and, um, Mike's training at this point. And those are recommended, um, actions.
Dr. Morse, um, so one, one of the hard copy items you gave us tonight was, uh, school district safety features, a few pages from, from Jasmine. Could you talk us through that briefly?
Yes. Yeah. Let me just make sure.
Do you have a?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you, Michael. Um, so, uh, again, this is a direct result of, um, Officer Nicolosi going into the Massway School, going to Moheramit, um, not the middle school, of course, because it's all state-of-the-art in going into the high school. And so, um, what he and, and Misty and David and, and Noe, if you want to chip in if I miss anything, just come up to the podium. But mostly, um, his initial concerns were doors that couldn't lock from, from the inside, uh, going out, going outside of the building. So we have, um, in each of the three buildings, other than the new middle school, um, outside doors that, um, really, uh, in, in terms of our, our student safety, staff safety, either need to be replaced or need to be modified. So do, door frames and crash bars and, uh, interlocking hardware, those are all pretty expensive. But then in, in the Moheramit School, he, um, Jasmine and, and Mike have given us examples of relatively cost-efficient solutions for being able to lock a door from the inside, which is basically adding a latch to the bottom of the door and a receptacle, um, on the floor. Uh, so those things are, are pretty, pretty easy to, to get to. Although we can multiply and buy a total number of doors in the district. It could, it's expensive pretty fast. Um, at the high school, same, same issues. Uh, that Massway, Massway and the high school more than Moheramit, um, have, uh, locking door issues. And of course, the high school, it's training people not to, um, doesn't cost anything to do this, but it's one of the most frustrating issues of my career. Um, high school, high school tend to, um, block doors open for convenience, you know, coming in from the field. Uh, that convenience makes the building vulnerable. And it's conversations that Principal Noe has had, Principal Filippone has had, Principal Allen has had about, you know, not allowing doors to be secured by putting a rock in them and preventing them from latching because of the inconvenience of walking to the door that they're supposed to go to. Um, so part of it is cost, Michael, and part of it is continuously training people on best practices in securing a building. Um, I would say that all four buildings follow the middle school lead this year and, uh, dramatically reduced the number of, um, entrances into the building. Uh, the high school couldn't quite get to one like the other three schools just from the sheer size. So I think you're at three, Noe. Is that what you are?
So already at seven thirty?
Um, so at seven thirty in the morning is when the doors unlock, so students can enter. And because we have about a thousand people entering the building between about seven forty-five and eight fifteen, um, at eight fifteen, all the doors lock. And so everyone goes in and out of the main entrance from eight fifteen to three o'clock. And at the end of the day, they can exit through various exits in the building. But when it's a school day, everyone is going through the main entrance and they have to come through. And then we have the check system with our secretaries and IDs and they have two different points that they have to get through.
Noe, didn't we make a modification for our PEP kids?
For PEP program, they are allowed. They come in about fifteen minutes later, between eight fifteen and eight thirty. Um, because of all the traffic, um, because of the bigger kids in the hallways, um, they do come in through a side door. But what they do is they do not, they know that they can't hold that door open. So they do have their badges, they do have the kids, and they know that they walk them to and from the car. And it does then allow the parents access to drop the kids off and it's a safer environment for them.
Right. First couple of weeks, we realized that seventeen and eighteen-year-olds and three and four-year-olds aren't a good mix. So we had to come up with a different solution.
Yes.
Another question. Um, in the back of the budget book where it has the positions, I can't find our LADAC enlisted. I see our DEIJ coordinator that we added, our communication specialist that we added, but I can't find our LADAC.
Because she's not a counselor. She's a staff member. She's in the global staffing line for the high school. She's embedded in our professional staff. Am I correct on that, Sue?
Yes.
She's in counseling?
I'm not. I, I couldn't find the increase. Like it, I just, when I look closely, I, I just couldn't find it.
It was a separate line last year. It was, I think, separated because they looked to take that and move it and it turned into a salary before it was coming out of our, um, I don't remember what the line is called right now. Um, because it was someone who was there two, uh, two hours a day virtually. So it wasn't someone who was actually a high.
Contracted service.
Thank you. Contracted services. And so this year, that amount was moved to the professional line of, it should be under counseling though for her salary.
Thanks for that correction, Noe.
What, what else is included in counselors?
In counselors and in people?
Yeah. So we have, uh, we have eleven people on the, we're looking at the, the headcount line, not, not headcount page, not the budget, not the dollars page?
I've never seen that. That format I haven't seen. But you have four counselors. We have our ELO coordinator. You have two school psychologists. I don't know if the director would be included in there. You have our LADAC. Um, I don't know if Sherry Ficker, our registrar, would be included in there. Um, I was thinking who else is in the office. It should be everybody who's in the actual counseling office.
So we can, we can get that detail. Wendy puts that together, Michael. So I'll get that detail for you.
Okay.
I should say that if there's a question I can't answer, I will always chase after the information and make sure you have it.
So, look, looking at some of the proposed items addition, so, so where we started from was kind of a, a, a level, a level services budget. Um, when we look at some of the increases proposed for next year, um, we know that we need to do superintendent search. The number that was included on the green sheet was forty thousand dollars. Um, I think that's going to be the upper end of that. So I, so I'm cautiously optimistic that that will be thirty thousand dollars or less. Um, one of the wild cards there is that, uh, direct advertising costs would not be included in the contract. Probably they'll be passed through costs from, from whoever we work with to do that search. Um, so obviously, I think that's a must-do for us. The three special education positions that are detailed here, um, in the middle school and at Massway, I think are, are must-dos. I think when we look at what Catherine went over earlier today, um, that's an, you know, a continuous process of reevaluation of the level of need. And I don't think there is unnecessary staffing in that group. So I think those are, are important. When we go down below that, um, you know, we've been, we've been talking about, uh, restoring additional funds into professional development to support our, our staff in their own growth that supports our students. Um, that to me seems like a very good investment, um, as well as district safety concerns. And I would like to see us be able to, especially because, uh, you know, we have made substantial investments in facilities around the district. And as we just heard with regards to things like the Massway cafeteria, um, project proposal, construction costs are going up substantially. I think we do need to look at a capital plan increase beyond what was in the previous budget. Um, I know there are some other things that I, I skipped over there. Uh, not that I don't think those are worthwhile things, but I, I would prioritize those a little bit lower than the other things that I mentioned.
I, oh, I remembered. One thing I wanted to, um, note is, and I can't remember where I read it, but the high school art classes are now taking like public transportation to, um, like the art museums in Boston. I don't, I think I, it was a thank you to the PTO. That's what it was. Because the PTO had, uh, provided some funds and for them to travel, like it was either CNJ or the, or the train, the Amtrak. Um, and given that situation, I, I would really like, again, to, to see if we could increase the field trip line from ten dollars a student to fifteen dollars a student.
And I think, I think that while it's ten dollars per student right now at the elementary level, I think it's even less than that at the upper levels. So I think there's even less funding in the budget right now at the middle school and high school. Brian?
I'm just curious as to everyone's, I mean, I know we've talked a lot on the K through four word language. Um, I think it's a great idea, but it's a hundred and one thousand dollar investment. And then we've committed ourselves to hiring another one in the next year on top of that hundred thousand. So, um, I'm curious whether, how important it is to have it in this year or start that process next year. I mean, I, I find value in it. I'm just, it's going to have to be a trade-off because that's a big chunk of money. And then we have to, we basically committed ourselves to another hundred thousand plus in the next year on top of that. So I'm kind of curious as to what people's thoughts are, on that, where that falls on the priority list.
Last Thursday, I, I think, um, Jim put out, uh, uh, an early goal of needing to hit three point five percent, um, simply because of the other unknowns. And I think if we needed to, uh, hit the three point five percent, which doesn't even get the top four items, then of course the, um, the, the, the K four language would fall off the, the list. Um, I'm hopeful that we will be able to get into our, our second, uh, maybe even third tier. And to me, um, while I think there's still some, some discussion about , um, the, what the program would look like, that it makes sense to move ahead this year with a Spanish teacher with a, um, and to start to, um, to see what it looks like in, um, certain grades of the, of the elementary level. Um, we know that the, um, bond payments are, there's a big bond payment next year. And so it seems to me like it could be a good year to, to slot in the, um, the, the world language teacher, um, recognizing that it doesn't necessarily mean that next year we need a second. We might find that it is, um, you know, we'll learn a lot over the next year about what, what language looks like, um, at the elementary level. And just to clarify, I don't mean that, um, I think that we should aim to have two teachers ultimately, but that simply because we have a teacher, um, in this next year's budget, doesn't require us with other considerations, including bond payments, to do the second teacher in the following year.
I'll take a big swing at this one. Um, my preference would be to delay it. Um, I think that people who have thought a lot about it, came up with a plan. It is a two-year plan with a two-year hiring, um, plan. Words are escaping me today. And so, without an, you know, without thought and forethought about how we might adjust that and whether or not we would serve any purpose to have a second year where one body is trying to cover half the grades over two buildings, when that wasn't what was originally devised. I would rather roll it out the right way than kludge it along and not have it be what it's supposed to be.
My concern with that is it's a, um, different administration, could be a different board. Um, we already had put so much effort pre-pandemic. We already had put so much effort pre-pandemic, and the committee has worked hard over the past months to try to regain and build on some of that momentum. So, part of me feels that it's, you know, this is really the window of opportunity to move on it. But I see what you're saying.
I think, and I'm really, you know, kind of hesitant also, again, because of my feeling that it's really is a two-year commitment. I think it would be unfair to have one teacher trying to cover it all for more than an initial year of developing the curriculum and so on and so forth. But my other concern is that we are still seeing the fallout from the pandemic in terms of SEL. And, you know, I do think about the fact that the language would be replacing, you know, time for, I know in Moheramit, it's the SEL that is in the Unified Arts Block, and at Massway, it is the library time. But I still worry about taking those pieces out, particularly right now where we are still seeing, you know, fallout from the pandemic. And does it make more sense to devote another year with those skills before trying to introduce something new?
All right. I want to just make sure everybody's got one more chance to offer some thoughts tonight. We don't have to go into, you know, we don't have to reach a conclusion tonight, but I do want to make sure that everybody has a chance to ask questions or provide thoughts before we move on from this part of the meeting. So, yeah. Brian?
Jim, is the foreign language for K-4, is that in our strategic plan, our five-year strategic plan?
It is in the strategic plan, Brian, but it does, it's the only strategic plan item where the board expressly didn't express what they wanted as an outcome.
Okay. Because I was saying, that's a great tool for future boards to look back on. But I agree with Michael on the capital plan increase. As I've said before, that we keep, every year, we're kind of horse trading with the capital improvement plan, and it's starting to build up and build up and build up. And we've had that happen several years ago, where we had to really, you know, take a huge hit to kind of catch up. So, I would like to see some more funds put into capital improvement in addition to what's already budgeted, just to start chipping away at some of those things, or at least get ahead, because the rate prices are going nowadays. It's just going to cost us more, and we'll get nothing different than a higher price. The product will still be the same, but we'll get a higher price. So, I would agree with Michael on that. And, I mean, it's a lot of food for thought. But, and also, I would strongly recommend the professional development funding, only because, like I said, it's your, I think I said it before, you're, it's like investing in your house. You know, you don't let things go. You replace them when they need to. You invest in it. You build onto it. Our staff is our biggest asset, and that professional development is what strengthens our staff, so it makes this school as great as it is. It's because of the professional development opportunities they have. So, I'd really like to see really a lot of emphasis on that aspect, just because it's, I think the return on investment on PD is so much more than pretty much anything else you can have in the budget, because ultimately, that PD comes back to our students. So.
A lot of important decisions in front of the board in relation to the priorities. I just really want to emphasize what Brian just said. Pre-COVID, you know, three years later, we've doubled the cost estimate of the Massway cafeteria, and those capital costs only get dramatically more expensive as we go through time.
Paige, I think we probably failed to get you the full budget binder. So, we'll work on that for, make sure you have all the same material for next time. Yeah.
I actually have a book for you. I should have given it to you tonight. I apologize.
Further, I just, yeah, we'll work our way. So, I just want to mention what is in the initial proposed budget from the administration in terms of the facility side of things. The major items, the biggest two items are continuing the process of climate control, air conditioning at the high school with the second floor of the tower section, and addressing the degraded parking lot situation at Moheramit. Some of the other items that were in the initially proposed facilities budget for next year are art renovation at the high school, which is, that's a low dollar, high-impact opportunity to remove some space that's no longer used and turn it back into educational space, some storage shed replacement, which are relatively, you know, we need to address storage units at Moheramit and Massway that are not going to be doing their jobs very soon based on the condition of those buildings. We have the opportunity to buy out the solar array that's on the service building, which makes, we've been purchasing the power coming out of that under a power purchase agreement for the last five, six, or seven years. And so, once we buy out the array, then we get that energy at no cost. So, that's, I think that's definitely something we should be doing. Starting to look at high school roof repairs, flooring at Massway, and replacing the gym floor in the high school, which is something that we have talked about for several years and deferred and is continuing to degrade over time. So, those are, that's what's in the initial facilities budget. I think those are kind of some of the bare essentials, and there are definitely some additional things that we would like to be able to start addressing. So, yeah. Dan, anything to-
Refinishing, not replacing, correct? The high school floor?
Yes.
It's a replacement of the top-
Surface. Yeah.
It's more than just refinishing, though, right? It's, yeah.
Yeah, there's some boards that need to be replaced. You know, when they get to the place of refinishing, it brings it down to the wood. And there's some boards that have buckled that need to be replaced.
UC?
I agree with much of what's been said already with the first four items, as well as professional development, safety concerns, and supporting the capital plan. I wonder if we can look at cuts as well in the proposed additions. You saw in my email that I think that the stipends for the tech integrator position, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, because unlike a department chair who gets an additional stipend because they're taking on more responsibility than their peers, this is really an expectation on all four tech integrators, as I understand it, to take on additional work, perhaps outside of the initial job. Jim, you'll correct me on this, in order to support the website. Heather brought up some great points about how the tech integrator, we want to clear as much space for them to actually work with students, to be introducing them to technology and the student-facing piece, while recognizing that they have some building-level supports. And so, I wonder if the additional tech integrator stipends could be cut and that we look at the tech integrator job description. Perhaps we'd have to spend funds somewhere else, but I'm not sure that they belong in expanding a particular job description beyond what, you know, what someone who is working full-time would normally be doing. I also think that there's room in the superintendent's consulting line. As far as the world language, I think I responded primarily to how I understood Brian's question about the finances of it. I'm remembering what Catherine said, Denise, yesterday, or last week about SEL and how world language, world culture, having a very early exposure to two different cultures in a sort of a deep and meaningful way is, you know, is SEL. And so, I think that, you know, we've looked at the cognitive benefits outside of the language and, you know, just the strategic plan to develop a, it was a plan to develop a plan, but I think we've gotten to what the proposed plan is. In addition to that, you know, we're in a very different place than we were when the strategic plan was developed, and it feels like there is, you know, just so much division and lack of understanding. And if you can have a class that's using language and using different cultures to build that empathy through seeing people, you know, outside of Oyster River, outside of the country, in a richer way, that will have ripple effects all the way through, you know, all the way through to high school and beyond.
So, I'm not going to add too much beyond the, I like the blueberries on top of the oatmeal that is the robotics and musical. I'm using Michael's vernacular. He's not even smiling. It's totally not worth it. You know, even if it is not the amount that was proposed, which I think is reasonable and completely in line with what we're on a low-end athletic team expenditure, something is better than nothing. So, and beyond that, like, when we talk about the musicals or the drama clubs, those are things that make them more community accessible because they're not trying to fundraise on ticket costs. And so, when we lower the ticket costs, we lower the threshold for people coming and seeing it, which means we have more people seeing the shows, and it is more community-driven. So, and then, you all know my field trip horse, but I suspect this is not the year we're going to die on that particular sword. So, my two cents.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. I think we'll close down that part of the agenda for tonight. Thank you for the good discussion. So, at our next meeting on November 16th, we'll have a full view of the revenue side from state aid. We'll be able to ask some, you know, my expectation is that that meeting will have a fairly full agenda of ordinary regular business, and have a chance to do some, you know, discussion to help us digest the revenue side. And then, we have the workshop scheduled for November 17th, where I expect that we'll really work through the details of starting to get to what we think that budget looks like for next year.
And can I encourage everyone to do exactly what UC did? If you have questions that pop in your mind between meetings, if you would send those questions to me, Sue and I will make sure we get you the information you need to make informed decisions. Thank you.
All right. Are there committee updates tonight? Done? All right. Public comment? Anybody for public? Oh.
I am ill-prepared, but sustainability met. Ha ha. We met on the 25th. We talked a lot about progress on our different goals. So, on our reduced waste goals, we were talking about a variety of things and what other districts are doing and where they are at in their process. One of the things I thought was particularly interesting is that, you know, we're trying to push composting, but if the compost bins are only available in the cafeteria and kids are eating snack in the classrooms, we are missing some of that. I think that's different at the high school. I think high school is starting to work through that in advisories or putting pieces of that together. But I may be conflating things too, because I'm not reading fast enough. So, I guess we're not having community in order, which is a little bummer for November. And I think that was it. But we met, and we're meeting again in November. And, yeah, sorry, I'm reading really fast. Okay, I think that was it.
Thank you. Other committee updates? All right. Is there anybody who would like to speak for public comment tonight? We have our future meeting dates, Monday at 6 o'clock with Barrington in Barrington. And then, our next regular meeting is right back here November 16th, and the workshop, budget workshop, the following night on the 17th. And then, I will move us towards our non-public session. So, I've moved that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA Chapter 91A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph L, which is consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel. I have a second from Brian. This requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes.
UC Terrell, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes?
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right. Thank you. We will enter non-public. There will be nothing else aside from adjournment when we return from non-public tonight. Thanks, everybody.